President Clinton, as he prepares to head for San Diego. Kimberly Hunt spent the day in Washington, where the president scored a major victory today. She had a chance to go one-on-one with him and joins us now from the White House. Kimberly, good evening.
Good evening, Stephen. Some of the president's aides told me he was in a particularly good mood when we spoke today. That stands to reason. Today was a good day for him. The plan that he's come up with, it's a 500...
We spoke on the east lawn of the White House. We talked about President Clinton, the husband and father, subjects of particular interest to San Diegans, and I asked him how optimistic he is about his deficit reduction package, making it through the Senate.
Well, I'm very hopeful. I think, you know, there were some changes made in the House Committee, a few. Some that I didn't like all that much, but they paid for all of them with deficit reduction anyway. And some that actually made the bill better. Holds families with incomes under $30,000 harmless from the tax provisions. Takes working-class families who are working poor out of poverty by changes in the tax system. If you work 40 hours a week, you've got a child in the house, you can be lifted above poverty by these tax changes. And gives real new incentives to small-business people, to real estate people, to high-tech people starting new companies, and to bigger enterprises that invest in new plant and equipment. There's a lot of incentives in this tax bill for these heavy industry companies that have laid off people in other areas to make those investments now and get a much quicker write-off. So, it is a very good bill, and it gives you real deficit reduction. And we're also going to set up a trust fund, so that the American people will know, no taxes without the spending cuts, and all the taxes and spending cuts go into a fund and must be used for deficit reduction.
Of course, the president is a very busy man, especially today. He had a lot going on. Our interview was tightly scheduled within his day, but I found him to be very gracious as some of his aides cued me that my time was over. I explained that to the president, thanked him for his time, and then he looked around and said, "I've got time, let's talk for a few minutes." So, it was really enjoyable. We got into a lot of subjects. We're going to have those, not only at 6:30 and 11, but throughout the weekend. We talk about issues important to San Diego, as well as a little bit about his personal life. Carol, Stephen?
Must have been quite a thrill, Kimberly.
When I spoke to the president today, I asked him about a subject of particular importance to San Diego. What's going to happen to the North American Free Trade Agreement? This agreement, if approved, is supposed to cut the bureaucratic bottleneck at the border and facilitate the free flow of goods from one country to another. But San Diego city officials, as well as the business community, are hoping it doesn't get bogged down in subcommittees, because time could kill it if the Senate doesn't.
I'm wondering how committed you are to expediting NAFTA and an agreement with Mexico in light of the fact that President Salinas will be out of office in 18 months or his term will be over.
Not only that, he has to pick a successor pretty soon, too. So, I want to expedite it long before he leaves office. I hope we can move on it this year. As you know, we are trying to get the Mexican government and the Canadian government to agree to buffer and buttress the NAFTA agreement with some side agreements dealing with environmental issues and labor issues, which I believe will make the agreement stronger, will provide some reassurance to Americans who are afraid that they're going to lose their jobs just because somebody can do the same thing in a new plant in Mexico for one-tenth the wage. So, I think that will help. And I also think it will help it to pass in the Congress. There are so many congressional districts now in America that have been through the kind of tough economic times that San Diego has, who can't see any gain from NAFTA immediately. Although, in truth, not all the benefits from Mexican trade just flow to California and Texas. Michigan, for example, a long way from NAFTA, is a long way from Mexico. It's one of the biggest exporters to Mexico.
Just said, everyone here at Channel 10 knows by now, it's no easy task. The security, logistics, technical aspects, public relations, media relations, much more. Add to that, there is no room for error.
A presidential trip anywhere must have precise planning and precision timing. Jeff Eller, deputy assistant to the president, had to oversee all of the White House arrangements.
It takes a fair amount of planning to move the president, as you might expect. What we first, what I look at in terms of setting up a town hall meeting is, how quickly can it be put together? There is security on his movements. There's a doctor that travels with the president whenever the president goes somewhere. There's always a military aide that travels with him.
Media affairs here in Washington had six days to arrange the town hall meeting, and as you can see here, KGTV isn't the only thing on the board.
White House media affairs, can you hold please? Thank you. White House media affairs, can you hold please? Thank you. Thank you for holding, how can I help you?
Security starts days before the president arrives. Secret Service sweep the area. Here at Channel 10, we will be bussed into the secured area from an outside location, although Eller says people in the neighborhood will probably not be too inconvenienced.
You will notice when the motorcade comes through, because they do block off some streets. But, other than that, we'll hopefully be arriving at a time of day when traffic is not too bad, and once we get into the parking lot, things should start to return to normal until he decides to leave.
President Clinton is the person who decided to come to San Diego. It then became Eller's job to organize a forum for him to talk to the people. We asked Eller why the president wanted to have a town hall meeting.
I believe it's what the essence of Bill Clinton is, and that is, he really thrives off of listening to what people have to say, talking directly to them, telling them what he plans to do and the programs that he's working on, and then listening to their responses.
Live from the studios of San Diego's 10, a town meeting with President Clinton. Now, your hosts, Carol LeBeau and Stephen Clark.
Good evening and welcome to what promises to be an exciting and interesting hour.
Please understand, Mr. President, San Diegans just don't have any more money to contribute to the coffers of government. My question is, can you name one country that has ever taxed and spent itself back into prosperity? Thank you.
Mr. President?
The answer to your question is, I can't. But you can't fairly characterize my program as that. I have cut more spending than my predecessor did. My budget calls for $250 billion-plus in spending cuts.
This is my brother, Colonel Charles Scharf. He was captured in North Vietnam, October 1st, 1965, and I have very good reason he is still alive today. Mr. President, you promised a clean sweep when you became president. The POW families have been stonewalled for more than 20 years by the same people in power. The gridlock continues.
Let me say, first of all, if you have any information about your brother you want to give me, I will do my best to run it down.
I would be happy to, sir.
Secondly, let me say that I have sent or supported a number of Vietnam veterans going over to Vietnam in the last several weeks to try to get more and more information. For the first time, when General Vesey was over there the last time, just a few weeks ago, we actually got a list. They gave us their list, which appears to be a very authentic list, of every POW and MIA that they knew and what happened to them, with a lot of information that they had never even revealed that they had before. So, I think they are moving forward.
I would like to say, it's a pleasure to be in the same room with the president.
Thank you. I work for you. It's a pleasure for me to be in the room with you.
We've heard of the conversion plan. What is the conversion plan, and how is it supposed to help those of us who are employed? And what is it supposed to convert us into except jobless, homeless, and hungry?
I know you've got somebody working in San Diego on this, that every community that's had a significant displacement because of defense cutbacks should have a community strategy for redevelopment. And among that should be that if you're getting job training, and if there's a real effort to create new economic opportunities, then we think at the local level, people should be working on creditors to exercise forbearance, to try to keep from having people from losing their homes and things of that kind. And I think, I believe a lot of that can be negotiated at the local level if people think things are happening. One of the reasons a lot of people like you are suffering so badly is that people don't sense that they're part of a big plan to turn this whole thing around.
Would you be willing, in the next 60 days, to meet with a select group of tribal leaders for a briefing on the matter as it relates to economic impacts, jobs, and Native American sovereignty?
Oh, yes, I would do that. I have, I have... The Indian reservations have been kept dependent for too long, have suffered from the patronizing attitude of the federal government, have never been empowered to seize control of their own destiny, and I do not blame the tribes for wanting the maximum possible flexibility on gambling. But what I'd like to see is a whole range of different initiatives, so we can have real, long-term economic prosperity, because there is a limit to how much gambling the country can absorb.
My birthday is tomorrow, and I'm 12-years-old tomorrow, and my question is, what kind of future am I going to have in store for me and the country?
That's the question, isn't it?
Thank you.
I think you've got a very bright future. The world you will live in will be freer of the threat of total destruction than any world we've ever known. It will be smaller, in the sense that we'll be in closer touch more quickly with people around the world of all different races and ethnic groups and economic systems. The volume of knowledge will double more quickly, and you will know more and do more with technology than any group of Americans or any group of people ever have. So, if you get a good education, by the time you're grown, we will have worked through a lot of the terrible problems we're facing now, and I think you will be part of a new burst of American prosperity, if we fix the problems the country has now.
I'm a teacher of English to students who speak another language, and I have observed that those students that do well are those students who feel good about their native language, about being bilingual. I therefore believe that teachers as professionals, as role models, need to be required to have at least a conversational ability in a second language. I'd like you to respond to that.
I think that's a decision that, I think it would be a good thing if all teachers did, but it would take a good deal of time to get that done with the President American Teacher Corps. And my own view is that that decision should be made at the state level, not nationally. I think the national government should facilitate and support the development of multilingualism among our teachers. But since over 90% of the money is raised for education at the state and local level, I think that if there's going to be a regulation about it, it ought to be done at the state or local level. I think the United States should support more language instruction, and I...
Availability of funds for minority small businesses through SBA loans and commercial banks is generally agonizing.
I appointed, for the first time in a good while, a person to head the Small Business Administration, whose job in life, before he became head of the Small Business Administration, was to start small businesses. That's what he did. He went out and raised money for people who wanted to start small businesses. It was not a political appointment, he was a serious businessperson. And we are trying now to make the Small Business Administration a real job creator. We have slashed the rules and regulations. It's going to be a lot simpler to apply for loans. It's going to be very different.
With the NAFTA agreement, will you mandate that when a person loses their job as a result to this agreement, which our government entered into, that they would be guaranteed any new job that is created?
I don't think I can do that, but what I think I can do is to identify areas which are likely to be hurt and do more to direct government investment there and other incentives to hire people back, and I would certainly do that. But I have to tell you, I think California will gain a lot more jobs than it'll lose if we have the right kind of trade agreement. Mexico's now our second-biggest purchaser of manufactured products. California wins big on that. I think we will win more than we lose, but some will lose, and we need to have offsetting investments. I agree with that.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The people of San Diego, thank you.
Thank you.
From the team that stands for San Diego, Kimberly Hunt, Carol LeBeau, Captain Mike on weather, Phil Farrar with sports. This is 10 News Nightcast.
It's been an historic night for San Diego. At 11 o'clock, President Bill Clinton came to Channel 10 tonight to talk about everything from defense conversion to sewage problems along the border. Right now, the president is back in his suite at the Hotel Del Coronado. Ed Lenderman is at the Del right now to show us how the president's night went. Ed?
Carol, according to the president himself, the evening went very well. We will hear from Mr. Clinton in a moment, but first, most of you saw the live TV town meeting. Now, we're going to show you what you didn't see. A behind-the-scenes look when a president visits a local television station, Channel 10. For a president who got up this morning around 3:00 AM our time, Mr. Clinton looked surprisingly fresh when his motorcade pulled up to the KGTV studio. Credit some of the color in his face to the sunburn he got during his visit to Los Alamos, New Mexico, earlier today. KGTV general manager Ed Quinn and the head of McGraw-Hill Broadcasting, Ed Riley, welcomed him to the station. First stop, a sales office, so a White House advance man could brief the president on the format for tonight's broadcast. And some makeup for Mr. Clinton for those hot TV lights.
Here we go, stand by.
Then it was in for a historic face-to-face chat with dozens of San Diegans. When the president of the United States is on the road, security is intense. Secret Service and White House police seem to outnumber Channel 10 employees. Move from one part of the building to another, prepare to be searched. This was a chilling sight. Speaking of security, it meant the audience for tonight's town meeting had to form up at the zoo and be bussed to the station. Eighty-six people, 43 of whom would get to ask a question of the president. Among this cross-section of San Diego, an aerospace worker who got laid off last Friday, the same day his wife got laid off from her job.
Well, I would like to find out what he's going to do for us in the short term. The policies and laws that are in front of Congress are long-term issues. We need some help now, short term.
The audience included the commander of a local VFW hall. Was he nervous? Definitely.
This is something that you never expect to do, is have the opportunity to ask the president a question one-on-one.
After an hour-long town meeting, Mr. Clinton spent upwards of 40 minutes with the audience. One Secret Service agent told me, "It's this one-on-one contact with people that the president relishes." Then a quick assessment of the evening.
I thought it went well. I thought your people here were very impressive and asked very good, clear questions.
No matter how popular any president is, wherever he goes, protesters are sure to follow. This is what it looked like outside the Channel 10 studios tonight. Everything from Republican supporters to people who want the president to do something in Bosnia. Even though the president's motorcade passed by in just a few quick moments, the people say it was all worth it. Carol?
Well, Kim, the president's main purpose for coming to San Diego, of course, was to speak at tonight's town hall meeting. So, what did Mr. Clinton say, and how did San Diego and the rest of America take it? For that, we turn to government specialist Adrian Alpert.
Welcome, the president of the United...
Take two. Ready, three. Take three.
President Clinton took his case to the people and promised more to come.
To say, I think this is probably the second town meeting I've done like this since I have been president, but I want to start scheduling them on a more regular basis now.
One, tight profile, one.
Tonight's town hall meeting takes the president outside Washington to measure public reaction to his programs, to listen to what the voters want. And national correspondents are quick to point out what's behind it.
When he gives us the hard sell, we don't report it as news, because we've heard it before. When he brings the message out into the country, it's new. It's a new spin, at least. He's here. It's something worth reporting.
The president's message, the economy, and the audience was, for the most part, tuned into the same.
Please understand, Mr. President, San Diegans just don't have any more money to contribute to the coffers of government. My question is, can you name one country that has ever taxed and spent itself back into prosperity?
I've got four years. Give me four years to try to deliver on the middle-class tax cut, but the first thing we need to do is drive the deficit down with cuts and some prudent revenue increases.
Even a gang member said the economy would give him away out of his lifestyle.
A lot of gang members want to get out of the gangs, but there's nowhere to go. There's nothing we can do. And one big thing that could change a lot of gang members' minds is jobs.
My own belief is that we do need more jobs, and that we do need jobs tied to continuing education and training.
Afterward, Ariel Zaniga assessed the president's promise.
Well, I feel that a summer job is not really good enough.
The president's popularity rating is running nearly 50/50, according to a recent poll, but clearly, his campaign style, "Take it to the people" message, may go a long way toward tilting the meter back in his direction. Adrian Alpert, 10 News.
Of the 65 people chosen to be in the audience, only a dozen had the opportunity to voice their concerns. And what did they have to say about the experience?
It was really great, and it was an interesting opportunity, and I think that if anything comes out of this at all, it's that whether you like the guy or whether you don't like the guy, he has an interesting way of dealing with the public.
Entertaining, excited, happy, satisfied.
Still, there were a lot of questions that went unanswered.
My question tonight was whether or not he was going to support the federal gay and lesbian civil rights bill.
What I was really interested in is what we can do to help America regain its trust and its leadership, because I think we've, you know, a lot of us don't really trust what's going on. And I'm going to have a baby, and I'd really like for her to be able to feel about America the way that I do.
Melissa Vogt didn't ask a question, but she did get what she wanted.
Standing in line for a long time, and then finally, I just, people kept shoving things into his face, and just started shaking his hand and stuff, so I just put this next to his hand, and he just took it, and then he signed it for me.
All agree about one thing, though, it was a fun experience. Well, it was not a pretty sight. If the folks at one downtown establishment or any measure of the state our country is in, there is a lot of work to be done. Byron Harland has their story.
The image of the president flickering throughout the room. Radio O'Neals downtown, where the beer is cold and criticism of Bill Clinton is red-hot.
I don't think he's ever paid the rent or made a payroll. I think he's fed at the public trough all his life.
Not a friendly crowd here. They did give the president points for taking questions, for stepping out of the White House and into the white-hot glare of public scrutiny, but that's where the support ended.
I think he's got a mistaken faith in the ability of government to solve people's problems. The government isn't going to do it. Private enterprise is going to do it, and it can't do it if you tax them into a position where they can't spend money.
It was brutal.
No matter what you think of Bill Clinton's politics, he is the president, and he is in San Diego, so you should pay attention to what he says, right? Maybe not. The proof, right over there.
They came to eat, to talk, and laugh. And what about Bill Clinton? It's not as if they weren't interested in what he had to say, just not now. And if they had a chance to ask the president a question?
I would say, why did you promise not to tax the middle class, and now you're taxing the middle class?
It may be their way of saying, "We know there are lots of other problems, but as far as we're concerned, there's one overriding issue. It's the economy, Mr. President." Byron Harland, 10 News.
With the president's visit, just about all eyes and ears are on San Diego tonight, literally. More than 200 reporters and photographers converged on KGTV's parking lots to broadcast the town hall meeting. You might have watched the historic event here on Channel 10, but it was also televised on scores of stations around the world. For the White House press corps, seeing and meeting the president is no big deal, but for people working in cities such as San Diego, a presidential visit is a big deal. I know a lot of people were thrilled tonight to be in the audience and ask their questions. I just wanted to tell you, as well as the people that are listening to us tonight, perhaps something concrete actually might have been done as well as just being able to voice our concerns. I was speaking with Congressman Bob Filner, who said that in Air Force One on the way into San Diego, that he told the president about a contract the city of San Diego has with the federal government to help pay for treating Tijuana sewage.
Right.
And he said, "Get it to me, and we'll solve it." Bob Filner had it by the reception after the town hall and handed it to the president. So, we'll see what happens with that.
It was an interesting point, because that was one of those things that the president brought up on his own. We didn't ask him the question. Nobody in the studio asked the question about Tijuana sewage, but I remember his words. He says, "Oh, I thought you were going to ask us about the Tijuana sewage," and then launched into that, and then obviously, something was taken care of, so.
I can see why he enjoys this forum. He is so well-suited for it. He just seems to feed off the energy of the audience, and he's tireless, and he's a wealth of information. I mean, no matter how you feel about his politics, he's extremely likable, and I can see why he wants to bring his message to the people, because I really think, as we all saw tonight, he is extremely effective there.
He's very personable, which is what people say that meet him along the way.
And you had the same experience, I know, when you were in Washington. At the end of last week, we were sitting as far apart as we are now, and that's where I was standing tonight when I asked him a question at the very, very end. It was impressive how this man, as tired as he is, I mean, as Ed Lenderman pointed out, he's been up some 20-something hours, and he was looking straight into my eyes when he answered that question and not wavering a bit. There was no tiredness in the eyes, we're very alive. The man is full of energy. There's no doubt, he's a very intelligent man, and he knows how to make that connection.
And as you said, just Friday, I was able to go into the White House, and he had such a busy day at the news conference. His $500 billion deficit reduction bill had just come out that day. But not only did he take the time to be gracious with us as San Diego visiting press corps to come in and talk to him, but when it was over, he extended the time so that we could actually get into issues that I hadn't had time to ask him about, that clearly concern all San Diegans right now, and it was much appreciated. He was very, very kind to us.
As he did the same thing for our 65-member audience tonight, too.
Sure. He's not afraid to take people on.
He really isn't. Well, Michael Tuck has some thoughts about tonight's town hall meeting with the president. He says, "Long after people forget the questions that were asked tonight, they will remember the fact that the president has tried to make himself accessible." Here's tonight's perspective.
It may be all the rage to do it, but I don't know how you pass judgment on any president just 100 days or so into his term, so I'm not even going to try. His policies, problems, and accomplishments aside, though, there's one area where Bill Clinton can be judged already: accessibility. His willingness to answer tough questions and to go just about anywhere to do it. In that regard, no president in history has ever done better. Clinton proved that again tonight with his town meeting with Channel 10 here in San Diego. When it comes to formal Washington news conferences, Clinton is not much different from the last two presidents. In his first 100 days, he's had three of those. In the same time period, Ronald Reagan had two, and George Bush, four. But remember, those are far-away events, attended by network correspondents and national reporters, dealing mostly with national issues. It's been said, though, the essence of all politics is local, and that's where Clinton differs from Bush and Reagan and every other president. Besides news conferences, Clinton has now done six town hall meetings, including the one tonight, and done interviews with television reporters from 25 different cities, including Kimberly Hunt here at Channel 10. So, in San Diego, we at least have the chance to ask about the closing of the Naval Training Center, or what Clinton can do about all our defense workers who got laid off, or how many jobs that new Free Trade Agreement is going to take from San Diego and give to Mexico. San Diego issues, and it's nice for a change to have a president who's willing to come here and talk about them. It's going to take a lot longer than just 100 days to judge what kind of president Bill Clinton will be, but if it's important for all of us to have access to our president, and I think it is, then this one already scores high. I'm Michael Tuck, this is my perspective.
This is 10 News at 5.
It was a short stay, but San Diego probably gained a lot by it. At 5 o'clock, President Clinton is headed back to Washington right now. After leaving San Diego this morning, he spent a few hours in Los Angeles before heading home just a short time ago. A crowd turned out to say goodbye to the president as he boarded Air Force One at North Island around 10 o'clock this morning. As usual, he stopped for a few minutes to greet the crowd, shake a few hands, and, yes, even hold a baby. From North Island, it was on to Los Angeles, where he toured south-central Los Angeles, the area hardest hit by last year's rioting. Even though the president's visit here lasted less than 24 hours, the effects on San Diego will likely be felt here for years. Carol?
Well, let's hope so, Stephen. Maybe the biggest benefit to President Clinton's visit is that he listened to the concerns of San Diegans about our economy, our military, and a number of other issues directly related to this city. Our team coverage begins tonight with Phoebe Chong Chua, who shows to what extraordinary lengths some people went just to get a glimpse of the president.
President Clinton is gone, but he didn't leave before touching many people's hearts. After last night's town hall meeting at the Channel 10 studios, President Clinton was up early and on the shores of Coronado Beach for a jog this morning. That attracted more than 100 people. Kristen Marks was sort of one of the lucky ones who got down to the ocean, but she never quite got close enough to shake his hand. There's so many people down there. There's a lot of people, and the Secret Service wouldn't let us get that close. So, are you disappointed? Well, not really. I got to see him, though. I mean, pretty close. You always see him on the news and stuff, and it's neat to see him in person. Many others did a little better. Randall Sibley got to say hello to President Clinton. Randall was only disappointed that the president didn't have time to play a game with him.
It was like a dream come true.
A dream come true, huh? Did you shake his hand?
Yeah.
And for this sailor, the feeling was the same.
Well, it's my commanding chief, since I'm in the Navy, but so it's a big deal to me. It's really great. It's an honor.
According to some, it's these gestures of friendliness that are marking President Clinton as one of the most congenial presidents ever. Phoebe Chong Chua, 10 News, Coronado.
Well, take a look towards the back of the crowd, right there in the red, you're going to see Carol LeBeau jogging right along with the President. By the time it was all over, she was a bit-winded and perhaps even a little surprised at the whole event.
The most surprising thing is how well he can run. I figured it'd be a nice modest lope for a mile or two. We went four miles. He negative split, meaning he started nine-and-a-half-minute miles and then worked down to the last mile, was under seven-and-a-half. And we were running with the Navy SEALs. Bob Filner and I were the only other civilians, and it was just an incredible experience. I mean, the guy is in great shape.
He was running pretty fast out there.
You watch him on, you know, the network stuff that we see, and he's, he looks like he's just loping, but he's covering ground.
Well, there you are, walking. What was he saying, we were about there?
I don't remember. I was two in awe, I'm afraid, but no, he was really easy to be around.